Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's get started. Thank you for coming and attending our planning commission meeting this evening. We will start by asking everyone to remember the silencer devices for the duration of the meeting. We also would like to seat our alternate members of the commission, Commissioner Lake and Commissioner Lewis.
Aaron, I just want the comment. So Shere Kielpack, he is on the commission, but she is not being seated tonight at her choice. She was a realtor as part of the seller project that we're reviewing tonight, so she's selected to step down, so she will not be participating.
Okay, I understand. And then we will have an opening prayer by myself, and then Commissioner Lake, Elias, and the fellow commissioners.
Our Father, have you come before you this afternoon this evening? We're grateful for the new blessings and joy. We're thankful for the opportunity we have to live in this community and to enjoy the beauty around us and the wonderful people that live here. We're thankful for this chance we have now to discuss a few items on our agenda concerning our community. And we pray that thou guide us and direct us in our discussions, that we'll be guided to know what as to do in our decisions and our discussions, and that we'll be open-minded to everyone that is involved in each one of the issues. We pray that thou bless us with thy guidance and correction throughout the rest of this week, so as the language describes.
Amen. Will the audience please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We will go right ahead into our agenda items. The first two items are considered consent items. I'll just read a notice to those of you who may be new to the consent items to describe what they are. Items on the consent agenda are routine in nature and do not require discussion or independent action. Members of the commission or the public may ask that any of the items be considered individually for purposes of commission discussion and/or for public comment. Unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. So I'll read the two items on the consent agenda, and then we'll ask if anyone wants to pull either of those two for a discussion. The first one is a review and approval of the planning commission minutes from August 22nd. And the second item is a consideration of a request for a home occupation permit for Lisa Keck Foot Zone Therapy to operate a foot zone therapy business at 127 South Double A Street in the R2 zone. First, are there any commissioners that would like to pull either one of those items for a specific discussion? By the shoulder of hands, anyone in the audience that would like to pull that item for a discussion? Okay. Then we will entertain a motion to approve both items at the same time. Chair, if I move to be the approval of those items. Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Motion on the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number three. Item number three is a consideration of amendment to the general plan from shopping center commercial and rural residential to shopping center commercial and high-density residential, and an amendment to the zone from general commercial, neighborhood commercial, and agricultural residential and residential R2B with a TBR art overlay for eighteen and a half acres located approximately 1600 South and 1600 West, and review of a concept plan that includes a grocery store and a residential development with single-family detached and twin home lots. And I'll turn the time over to Sean for a description of the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So the property is indicated as about eighteen and a half acres in size. There's a mix of zoning currently. There's general commercial on the east and then followed by neighborhood commercial and then A2 as you move west. There are two general plan designations, a shopping center commercial on the corner and rural residential for the remainder of the property. The property butts Highway 89 and 1600 South. Both of those are UDOT roads, so questions related to traffic and access permits, those will be handled by UDOT. So if at some point a project is actually proposed, they would go through an access approval process through UDOT. The original submittal, when this application was submitted, included higher-density residential and some townhomes. When that was submitted, there was some concern expressed by many of the neighbors, and there was actually a neighborhood meeting that was held. I attended that along with the mayor and the city administrator and the applicant, along with the neighbors. And during that meeting, the applicant at that time agreed to postpone the initial scheduled hearing for this item in order to be able to try to work with the neighbors on a concept plan or acceptable. And so the applicant worked on that concept plan, and that's what is being presented for you tonight. So this is the aerial of the subject property, if you see on the screen back. This is 1600 South. Those are the railroad tracks and Highway 89. Existing general plan, just got to go through what we have on the general plan, so that the two parcels that we're discussing tonight are here highlighted in yellow with the shopping center commercial as the general plan designation and rural residential. High-density residential is what the property to the north is designated, and all the purple is low-density residential. The red is general commercial and the yellow is medium-density residential. As far as the existing zoning for the site, the zoning is the general commercial on the east with that neighborhood commercial. There's a strip of A2 and then a section of A2 that also includes a TBR receiving site. The property around it is zone RA1. You've got some A2, some general commercial, and some RA2. So the applicant's proposal was to rezone all of the seven acres to general commercial, so it would be just the change of that neighborhood commercial strip to general commercial, and then to amend the general plan for the eleven and a half acre residential portion from rural residential to high-density residential and to rezone the property to R2B. This is the concept that went out with the notice with the grocery store on the east on the general commercial with the residential to the west. Staff notes, this isn't just a preliminary concept plan, especially as we're discussing with the Ridley's design. If and when the rezone gets approved, then they would get into more detailed design work, market analysis, and come forward with the project at some point in the future. So the general commercial, as we're talking about the commercial section first, the general plan, as I indicated, supports shopping center commercial. The general commercial GC1 zone is the zone that's identified as the primary zone for that designation. Staff is fully supportive of the commercial component of the project. We think this is a wonderful opportunity for the city and is an excellent location. The general plan has had this designated as a prime commercial location for a number of years. I just point out that when we did the Maple, the Mapleton survey a few years ago, there were questions regarding what types of businesses would be important to attract, and seventy-three percent of the respondents indicated that the grocery store was something that would be highly desirable. So it is something, in staff's view, that is very important, and we're very much in support of. As far as the residential goes, there certainly are some, as you look at their proposed concept, there's certainly some valid reasons to propose what they're proposing. The commercial development, Ridley's in particular, has indicated that they typically prefer to have multifamily or higher-density housing next to their stores just because of, they tend to have fewer complaints from those types of uses. However, as staff has looked at the general plan and tried to evaluate it based on the big picture, our determination is that it really makes more sense to continue to follow the pattern that's in the general plan, which is to go from low-density to medium-density to the commercial and the high-density residential. And so based on that, staff's recommending approval of the medium-density residential, which would equate to the RA2 zone. That would allow third-acre lots or larger on the site, and you could not use TDRs to further increase the density. So we included in the staff report just showing typically how the purple, which is the low-density residential, typically transitions to the medium-density residential areas. And so that's why we think it's most appropriate to do that for this location as well. This is just a zoomed-in of the corner, and we think again, by going to RA2 and medium-density residential, it's consistent with the plan for directly across the street, how that's already been implemented at the corner with the RA2 zone where Wyden Cove is currently being built. So again, with that, staff's recommendation would be to approve the GC1 zone for the commercial, approve a general plan amendment to medium-density residential, and a zone change to RA2. Since the staff report came out, we have had a chance to speak to the applicant. They're here, they can speak to it as well, but they've indicated that while it's not their preference, that they are willing to work with the RA2 proposal, as staff is currently recommending. So with that, we have to answer any questions, if there are any of them.
I have a question. Just for definition, what is the difference between general commercial and residential commercial?
The neighborhood commercial?
Yeah, neighborhood commercial.
So the neighborhood commercial really was meant to be for very small pockets of commercial, like you would see on the corner of Maple Street, you know, or the bakery that's across the street. That's more of the intent of the neighborhood commercial, is small pockets of really neighborhood-type services. It's unclear why that section of the current site is zone neighborhood commercial. It doesn't fit with the general plan, and it doesn't really fit with the intent of the neighborhood commercial.
Any other questions for staff this time?
So just to clarify a couple of things, you know, we had a lot of letters that came in, and some of them involve, some of the questions from residents involved the traffic and road maintenance and some of those sorts of issues. And so I just want to clarify, we have Highway 89, we have 1600 South. So who maintains and pays for those roads?
That's UDOT. So UDOT handles the maintenance, they handle the permitting for access, they'll handle the traffic analysis when those applications are...
Were both Highway 89 and 1600 South?
And 1600 South.
Because that, you know, that was one concern, is that, you know, we're going to have more traffic, more, you know, real wear, and so it would increase the hours, so it sounds like that's actually going to have to stay. I guess one other question that came up is, and then one question in my mind is, so we have, we have two entities. We have Ridley's and then Johnson Development, and so what is the relationship between those two? Are they connected or independent in any way, or what's, how will these develop?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. The application was submitted jointly. They are separate owners, so that's probably a question you want to ask the applicant.
Okay. This is a public hearing item, so we will hear public comment. Do we have questions? Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. But first, before we open the public comment, we want to bring, allow the applicant to come up and let the commission ask questions of the applicant.
I'm trying to figure out what our relationship is now. I hope I answered correctly.
Just close friends. To answer the question, we are separate entities. We work on this project together in terms of purchasing the land and kind of coordinating our use. We've done this at another site as well.
Sorry, could you just state your full name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Donal Mark Ridley with Art and Properties.
Okay.
But yeah, we work together at another site as well, work together, and it seems to be a good partnership. Yes, from any use that's kind of a heavy commercial, it's good to have that buffer that's either lighter commercial and so residential as a buffer, but we understand. We're all trying to squeeze into this area and make it a good place for everybody. Do you have any questions for us?
No questions for them.
Yeah, I've got one. So in talking about, in some of the variations of the plan that's going forward, my understanding is that your preference is to have not single-family homes right next to the, right next to the store, so, you know, like apartments or condos or whatever. So what has been your experience with single-family homes next to your properties versus other options?
Again, that's purely a preference, I think, and I don't think that's unique. I think you see that in a lot of cities, in terms of the way it's planned. You'd have your heavy commercial areas and then dense residential, you know, and single-family homes. So yeah, it's, that is something that would be preferred, obviously, but we have examples in both, and even in our small companies.
So there haven't been big problems with single-family homes next to the store?
No, I wouldn't say big problems. I think just the, indeed, the expectations are different, I think, from our neighbors. I don't like to think that we're good neighbors, but yeah, absolutely. Given the choice between being up to single-family homes or an apartment or against a residential, you'd always choose the density residential.
Right. And you're...
Can you just get your...
Can you tap that picture?
Tap on that, Mike.
Okay. Someone have just quieted.
So the loading dock that steps in back and probably access from Highway 89, I guess, is that, is that left, right?
The east.
Yeah.
The east.
Depends how you look at it.
Yeah, and obviously, as I stated, this is purely conceptual. Until we go through this process of getting it approved, making sure it fits with the city's plan, you know, we don't go to those next steps, including market surveys and seeing what the best use for the property is.
I was just curious about, you know, what's the impact between the property and the owners?
Again, typically, when we go through that next stage of presenting an actual project, that's always a conversation of what type of buffer do we need between the back of a store like ours and whoever, you know, I believe in this case, just to the south is single-family homes. And so I was trying to make sure that we're good neighbors, and it just depends on what's requested, what's needed.
Okay. Any other questions? Clarifications, comments? Does anyone... Thank you, Ron, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any commissioner want to talk to the applicant about the residential?
Just maybe to clarify the relationship between the two. You have a red outline for the commercial and a blue outline for the residential. Is the Ridley's partnership, the red and the blue is the residential?
Yes.
I'll just, I guess, as long as I'm here, yeah. Mark and I, we've tried to be, oh, say this. I'm Ryan Johnston, Johnston Developments. We've been working, like I said, with Ridley's on another project here in Utah County and also on this project. And so when we visited with city and staff and obviously recognized they would like to see something commercially come into the city at some point, we felt like this was one of those corners that had been established for one of those purposes. So originally, when we put the concept together, and I don't know, Sean, if you have the first proposal that we put out there?
I didn't, I didn't have it on the slide.
But that's okay. So when we had met with staff and looked at some different options, we had a project that was even more dense than this, because this was a TBR receiving site, and felt like this would be a good area to utilize some of those TDRs. So we had, it was more dense. There was a two-and-a-half acre open space that would be all HOA maintained, and that's when we had, that's when it first went out, and obviously, you know, neighborhood residents just didn't feel like that was just way too dense. And as a developer, we've always tried to be a good neighbor. We've tried to go, like, we've made with the city staff, and we really try to follow their recommendation and their direction they give us as a developer. So we sat down, we felt like, maybe that's just too dense, right? So we came up with kind of a, I guess, a, kind of hopefully, a middle round a little bit. This is when we came with this R2B proposal, still working with Ridley's, recognizing that, excuse me, their desire to have a little bit of a transition from heavy commercial through that process. So I just, yes, as I met with individuals, right, where I recommended, we talked about the third acre buffer, some smaller lots, and then these townhomes, or sorry, twin homes, no townhomes. We recognized, when I visited with them, we didn't have a conceptual, so it was closed, but this is when they put it on the paper, this is kind of what it turned into. We met with the city and staff again, and we had full support of this R2B proposal, and that's when we decided to present it to planning commission. Well, I guess that was Monday evening, we got an email stating that, you know what, we just felt like that isn't, we're just not okay with this, kind of all of a sudden. And though we feel like this is what fits, that's obviously my opinion as a developer, we're willing, again, to follow the direction given to us by staff, and if they feel like the best fit is just generally R2 with the third acres, again, we're willing to follow that direction given, and propose that.
So you'd be, you'd be okay with just doing third-acre lots and no twin homes?
Yeah, we'd prefer not to, but yes, we would be okay with that.
Okay. So we will open up to public comment. Please feel free to come up to the mic, but again, please state your name for the record. And we'd ask that you please try and be conscious of statements and concepts that have been already spoken earlier to certain points, so that repetition doesn't drag out the meeting all night long. And we'll try not to keep you to a certain number of minutes if you'll try and keep your comments brief, but please feel free to come up to the mic.
My name is Shadow Sorsen. I live in the opposite corner of Mapleton. But it's just when it came to my attention, I felt like it was important that I come and speak. I have been part of seven developments in Mapleton. I was here at, used to be called Planning and Zoning, I think. Now it's called Community Development. When Harvest Park, the TBR idea came out, and the general plan, and since that time, Mapleton, and you've been through this, has been kind of beat up, Planning and Zoning, Community Development, about the density on the west side. Every time something comes in, you get a group of people that are frustrated with the situation, don't understand the general plan, and it doesn't, and it gets to be this battle that's really not the right thing to do. This one...
It's not just isolated to the west side, either.
It is not. And, but this is an integrity issue, in my opinion. I agree that it should stay as our A2, third acre, the density, the higher density, the increased density than the lower, and now RA2. I think it's the right move. I fully support the community development plan to stay in that. I think we've got to be very, very careful when we get with developers. I mean, I'm a developer. I've heard this, that if you're kicking on the west side of the freeway, it's an open door. Heard it, heard it. Heard staff say, heaven forbid. I've actually heard members of Mapleton use that term, "harsta"?
Yes.
Yes. I've been here for a while, right? It could have been before you.
You're not talking about...
I'm not talking about you.
It must be very nice to clarify, assuming that it probably is.
Yeah, no. I mean, when Harvest Park came in, that was a riot, you know, because of TBR, so I've actually heard that happen. To me, when I saw this one, and I didn't realize up until this moment that there was kind of an agreement for the RA2 zone, but when I saw that the townhouse is a high-density residential pocket zoned into an area where it's not supposed to be, it was never designed to be, and because of the Ridley grocery store, which I thought should be over on Maple Street, but because of the Ridley grocery store, it really felt like an integrity issue. Are we going to pimp ourselves out? Can we pimp out the west side so that we have some commercial? I've owned a business in Mapleton for 20 years. I'm one of, I don't know, maybe 12 people that own a real business in Mapleton, maybe 20. I understand the need for tax base for commercials, but it's not at the risk of the integrity of Mapleton's vision, Mapleton's general plan in this area. So the fact that the developers now come to the table and said, hey, if it's going to be RA2, it can be RA2. I just wanted to fully support that and just be careful about the integrity of the general plan, the Mapleton vision, and everything that you've said up to this point. This is going to come into this one. If this one actually became a high-density residential, every argument before this on the west side had validity. If this one stays RA2, follows the general plan, then all the arguments before have the same validity. You did what the plan told you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a note, please try to keep the clapping down, just because we don't want to encourage the opposite. We want to keep it nice and clear.
My name is Simon Greated, resident of six years. I'm a business professor at BYU, and my home does not border the property in question, but I'm relatively close to it. So first of all, thank you to Sean for keeping the neighbors in the loop on this. That's helped a lot. Couple of points not made so far. The first would be the good faith of the neighbors that live on the border of the property. So individuals that have bought two acres and had their homes for decades, the idea of having high density right next to those homes, when down the road they may sell them for some type of retirement, is worrying. I would be worried if that were my property. So hence, I think the initial concern by neighbors with two-acre, single-family homes right next to high-density homes, property values and things like that. Something else would be just the security of neighborhoods with high-density versus medium-density. I think high-density homes bring in a transient nature, sort of rental properties, sale after sale after sale and leasing, and that brings with it its own concerns. So people that, once again, two-acre homes, stay for, been there decades, with that sort of, right next door, I think that the transient nature is very concerning. One thought that hasn't been brought up is just animal rights. There are several with two-acre lots that do have animals, and I think, again, high-density next to low-density animals tends not to be a positive outcome. Human interactions with animals, significant human interactions with animals, isn't a good thing in general, especially the farm stock and so forth. So that's something to consider there, is just people's animal rights and so forth. So for me, I do also support the position of Sean and the direction, the third acre should be the lowest lot size that we go. I think, having lived on the third of an acre, it works, it's a good-sized plot, similar to the Arrive Homes that are kitty-corner, that sell for around half a million to 700,000. So from keeping the rural perspective, that would be sort of acceptable. Anything less than that, I think we're getting into some of these concerns, where even though, like I said, I'm not a direct neighbor, I'm an indirect neighbor, and so I try to think about them. One, just one thought on Ridley's. I would like a grocery store in Mapleton, and I have heard that Ridley's has come under the gun, and I just want Ridley's to know that there is a good portion of the people here that would welcome that store. And please, if you do develop here, please link arms with us in figuring out what's best, but I would welcome that, so that's my remarks.
Thank you, Simon.
My name is Michelle Gaiman, and I am buying a home. It's being built in Wyden Cove right now, and I am coming from Vineyard. And I moved into Vineyard two and a half years ago when there were just a couple neighborhoods, and it was all up in green space. And at the time, I obviously was naive and did not look into the general plan or the zoning. And if you've driven by there now, it is high-density haven. And so when we... And so when we were looking at where we were going to buy our final home, where we want to be for 20-plus years, we're further out from what's convenient as far as location. But we looked at Mapleton's plans, at their general plans, at the zoning, and that was part of the reason why we decided to build here. And so I was really happy when we looked through past meetings, that you guys, city meetings, and times when it'd come up to rezone different areas. And I was so happy to see residents showing up and people saying, no, we don't want more high-density, or moving that way. And so I saw this on Facebook today, and I was like, crap, I have to show up, because I love what they have planned, and I'm glad that they're looking at going to medium-high density. Obviously, I'm not going to directly live there, but the traffic is majorly affects the whole city, it affects the feel of the city. And also, I'm currently renting a twin home in Springville in my in-between, and so I know what that's like, it's an in-between place where people are always moving. So I basically, Vineyard did not have a good city start plan back when they had like 2,000 residents or less. And so I basically, I mean, if you open the door once, the developers are going to flood in. So I appreciate you trying to stand the ground on keeping to the general plan, and that's all I wanted to say, so thank you so much.
Hi, I apologize for being late, my husband is sick. I did talk to Sean earlier, my name is Gina Harness, I live on Highway 147 and just stopped for about a half block, whatever. My big concern is the traffic flow. We now, the railroad track backs up to my house when there's a train. If we have very many new homes, it will back up clear to the light, and there will be a big problem. I also looked at this plan, as I got it in the mail, and I can see two entrances onto 147. I don't know if it's possible to put, I don't know how they're going to do the traffic. They've got to do something with the highway before they even do one-third blocks, as far as I can see. So like I said, my big concern is the traffic flow, the railroad, and trying to get that many people to the high school, because that's a really big part of where we're at right now. Thank you very much, I'm sorry I missed the first part.
Hey, my name is Jill Cox, I live on the corner of Park Meadows and 89. I have the corner house that is on the north end across from Stewart. So I'm kind of kitty-corner from Ridley's. I think I have some experience going through this, I moved out here 10 years ago from Warham. I lived there while they built Shop 1 Smith in my backyard. I went through the wall, how high do you do the wall? How do you do these things? I went through all this. My husband would be here, but he's on a plane flying back from Germany right now, and he just had a concern. He is an engineer that does sound level instruments. And our main concern, and I think this is a big concern with this right here, is noise. Hey, we already have a high school right there, but I am concerned about the quality of noise with the traffic mark. I'm not really, you know, it'd be nice to have a store there, I didn't mind living next to a store, but going through the process of building it was a pain. But once it was there, I do understand, we did have condos near us, and condos are not taken care of well. Okay? Much better plan is medium-density where you have houses, because people tend to take care of their places better than they do when you're in a condo or an apartment living style. I've seen it, I lived in it. And I am concerned about the noise, as Mary said, I'm really concerned about the traffic, because I am right there. I am right there, I know what the traffic is like right there, right now. And what I'm concerned about are the teenagers that go to Maple Mountain High School. This is going to be such a hard thing with, you know, kids don't drive well as it is. I know I have some of them myself, I've been through this. But I am concerned about the traffic from the high school coming over here. There's just a lot of concerns, and if you do something like this, I would hope you would at least do medium-density, I think anything lower than that, I would prefer not to. When I moved out here, we did look at the general plan, and that was one of the reasons we moved out to Mapleton. We had tried a few times to move out here from Warham. This was one of the reasons we picked Mapleton. And now, seems like everything's changing on us. You know, this was going to be our future. And it's sorry to say, if this doesn't, if some things do change, we'll have to find a different future. This isn't what I wanted to live near. But I do have the bright kitty-cornered edge behind the market, across 89.
Good evening, my name is Dan Stratt. Just a couple of points, and I think there's a number of issues that we're dealing with here. First concern is that this city has no control over the roadways. So if what I understood is correct, you can make a request to UDOT, and hope they do the right thing. Is that about, is that about the right, is that about right, Sean?
So UDOT has a very stringent process, that they will follow the process.
But they may or may not widen the road, they may or may not adjust traffic patterns. This group and the city council, for that matter, has no control over that.
Correct, we can have some influence through the meetings, but yes, it's UDOT's final decision.
So the decision you guys make, may or may not actually be able to support, the traffic may or may not be able to support this. Biggest concern that I've got with this project. We've been told that this is a joint development, so we're kind of being sold, the Ridley's thing. And, oh by the way, you get to take this housing. And that's not what we're looking for. My property borders this land. I'm on the backside of, so I'm along the line that says R2B there. I've got a two-and-a-half acre property with a 6,250 square foot home. And you want to put high-density housing in there. That's not where I want to live next to. My home is worth well in excess of a million dollars. And this is what, and this is not what I want my neighbor to be. That's a concern for me. The other concern that I've heard since I've been here is that we're all talking like the third acre lot idea is done, it's a done deal. That I kind of heard that Sean says the city supports that, the developer says, oh, we're all for it, we'd rather not, but we'll take it. I'm not for it. That's not what this is, that's not what this property is zoned. It's not what we were hoping to have in our backyard. Could we be worked with? Maybe. But that's not what, that's not what I'm hoping for my backyard. So why is it a third acre? Why aren't we talking a half acre? If you today were to put half-acre lots in that development, that would still be four times, four times the density of the smallest lot that borders that property. So when we talk about third acre lots, now we're talking six times the density. So I do not see that as a reasonable compromise. I'm all about compromise. I'll tell you that I, at the community meeting, I'm the one that was telling our neighbor to be willing to compromise, that I do not see this as a compromise. Appreciate it.
My name is Eddie Rollins, and I, at this point, I'd like to, for the sake of repetition, rather than that, I support what's been said. Rather than go into that, I just have a few questions. I consider myself an open-minded person, and I'm pretty much aware that something's going to be built there, and I'm just preparing for whatever's going to happen. But I also live in the bottom-left corner there. And it sounds like something's coming regardless of the outcome, but, and I appreciate what Mrs. Cox brought up, a wall. I'm just concerned about, or have a question, is there going to be a wall on the backside of my property? Is there a ditch there? Is it going to be covered? Is there some protocol for some of that, or is that already addressed? Maybe I could just copy that protocol there.
Just quickly, the staff recommendation is that, yes, they build a fence or a wall between the properties. If there's ditches, those get worked out between the applicant and the irrigation district. If the ditch is on their property, they'll be most likely required to pipe it. If it's on your property, it probably won't impact it. But we can talk about those details if you want to contact me as well, appreciate it, thanks.
Mr. Ross, just to clarify, there's been a couple of different opinions expressed, and so you said you agree with what's been said to the course on?
Probably majority.
What's that?
My name is Jill Sherman, I live right next to, well, I'm where that says proposed R2B zone, that's my backyard. That's where my cows are currently, and my chickens and my goats. And so I have a major concern that if we put all this housing in there, I'm going to have problems with people who don't like flies, or poop, or smells, or whatever. And I understand that progress is going to happen, but I also kind of feel like I have rights too, you know? And we've been in Mapleton since 2005, we've only lived at this house for six years, but we moved from a third acre lot to a two-and-a-half acre lot, so that we could have animals and do the things that we are doing there, and really enjoy it. I think the third acre lots are a vast improvement over what was originally proposed. I'm not, I don't want anything with shared walls. And I told the developer that when I talked to him, I didn't want twin homes, I didn't want townhouses, nothing with shared walls. So I see the one that Sean has proposed as an improvement. I wouldn't mind seeing some half acres along with those third acres. But I definitely oppose the R2B zone. I do not want high-density in my backyard. I don't want the problems that come with it, I don't want the depreciation of my home, because it does, it's not consistent with the neighborhood that's around it, it's not consistent with the general plan, there's no, usually when people are zoning, there's a step up from, you know, two-acre lots, and maybe an acre, and then a half acre, and then there's little mini lots, not the, you know, the ones in the middle are less than a fifth of an acre. And so that's not, it's not consistent at all with what the area is around it. And so I can deal with a third of an acre, I know a lot of people probably want to shoot the person. It's a lot better than this. I would really like to see half acres, but I can live with a third of an acre. I don't think we should have to, somebody buys property that they knew was being rezoned, and there's a lot of problems with that, with people representing it that are on land commission, selling it to people that are on the city council and so forth. So that has a, I mean, that really does have a, when they know it's going up for rezoning, and that has a real, a real feel for people in Mapleton, really aren't liking some of the stuff that's taking place right now. And so to say that, Ridley's can come in and buy it, and then say, well, we want this, and, you know, people here have to take that, because 73% of residents 10 years ago said they would like a grocery store, I don't think that's really reasonable either. I don't think it, and that grocery store, hey, I think it's great, but on the same token, I don't think it's going to last. And so, that's what I think.
Hi, my name is Karen McWiggins. I'm totally new to stuff like this, so you can tell me to sit down if I start saying the wrong thing. And I'm known as being blunt, so I'm going to say it. I think that this has turned into something, and just when this neighborhood came up was my first introduction to how things are going in Mapleton, and it was a shock to me, a negative shock, that property is zoned a certain way, and somebody buys it and asks to have it changed. And I think that's a terrible precedent for us to do, and for us to accept. And I think it sounds like negotiating with terrorists, when they come in and say, we want this much, you know, I come in and say, I want a blank amount of condos or townhouses, and then it sounds really nice to move, oh, back down to a third of an acre. And I think, no, that's not what it's zoned for, why would we change it? And why would we set a precedent like that? There's one Mapleton in Utah County. And I lived here, because I'd rather live in a weed than a condo. I live on seven acres, not too far from here, and I bought it because I wanted some space around me. When I drove through Mapleton, I thought it was nice, I don't like the changes I've seen, I'm disappointed by them. And my daughter actually goes to school in Lyndon, she goes to a charter school in Lyndon, and it takes me 25 minutes to drive from there. I feel like this is the only really rural area that's still drivable to there, or to Salt Lake, if you have a job in Salt Lake. And I don't know why you're changing it. This is a beautiful area, it's a small piece of land, it does not need to look like every other city in Utah County.
I agree with everything that's said, I'm Jeannie Stewart, by the way, and I have all these same concerns, but one in additional. My house is the backyard to Ridley's. And I am worried about the noise, I'm worried about trucks waking me up out of my bedroom, because it's right there, and I'm worried about all the traffic, because the store will have a lot of traffic. I noticed that the developer put one road in and out on 147. Those people have to go out of there to come back into the store. That's going to be a lot of trouble, a lot of traffic. So that's what I'm concerned about, along with everything else that was mentioned. And I feel like, we kind of feel like we have to compromise down to one-third, but in reality, we don't have to. If we all get together and don't want to, we could do a referendum. And that's all I want to say.
Hi, my name's Tammy Pugmeyer. I do not live close to this property, but I do live here in Mapleton. Most of you know me because I was a sponsor of the 2018 referendum about the zoning that was changed on Slant Road, and then we did the referendum. I'm a big supporter of not needing to change zoning, and you can tell that by my experience, you can probably guess why I feel that way. It's really difficult for me to understand why neighbors have to compromise. They had an expectation, they knew what would be in their backyard. Anyone who purchased the property also knew what they could plan on building. You are not obligated to give them a gift by changing zoning, and I would encourage you to not do that. We all know that our TDR situation in Mapleton is a little crazy, and I don't understand why TDRs couldn't be applied to the current zoning, allowing half-acre lots on the property instead. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I just make one comment? I just wanted to, and I recognize, just so change is hard, but Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, given this neighborhood just to the south, just applied to amend the general plan and change the zone from two-and-a-half to one acre lots. And that was, I mean, I'm just saying that that was allowed.
Mr. Johnston, can I tell you why that was done? One neighbor wanted to have a house built for his daughter on his property, so we all said he could. And then they changed it all to one acre. We didn't want that. Just tell me. Just tell me.
My name's Lorna Newbold, and I live on the east side of Highway 89 in a subdivision. And basically, the entrance to our subdivision is very close to the side property of the Ridley's. I have lived in Mapleton for almost 18 years. We have three Walmarts within five to 10 minutes. And call me cheap or whatever, but I will go to Walmart probably almost every time. There may be one day, if I was super desperate, would I go to Ridley's. I know there was a survey, 73% wanted a small grocery store. This, to me, is not. I wasn't one of the 73%. And I just don't think, if you have ever driven on this intersection corner, 89, during school hours, before school hours, after school hours, the commute is no longer all the way down 89. We've got extra stoplights. If I'm coming from Spanish Fork down 1600 South and want to turn south onto 89, there is not even a turn lane. If someone is going straight and going east, I can't get by the majority of the time because the curving comes clear out. Gina Hardness mentioned the train. It is, that's an added extra traffic problem. And if you've been there with teenage kids whose frontal lumps are not developed, there's been many accidents in that intersection, and I just think you're asking for a big problem putting a gas station, which I've heard kitty corner, another gas station, is already supposedly might be going in by the medical center. We had three gas stations here not too long ago, and how many are still here? Only two. One of them didn't make it. Is Ridley's going to make it? And if it doesn't make it, what then goes in place of Ridley's? Do we sit with an empty building, a vacant something, if it doesn't make it? We have so many options around here, but like many people have said, Mapleton's different. Most people move here because it is different. And I understand that people are saying we need a commercial base, but I don't think this is the right way to do it. And I don't think it's, I don't think it would last. And I'd hate to see a big vacant building. I mean, how many you go past Kmart, the old Kmart? That's not attractive, an empty box stuck building. So those are my thoughts.
I live probably a quarter mile south on the 89. We have two acres in a different but similar subdivision. And as I looked at this plan, if my two acre property were to border that, I wouldn't have an issue with the density of the plan at all as it is, as it was before. I don't have a problem with Harvest Park in the density. What I do have a problem with is that Mapleton doesn't seem to be interested in making any kind of intentional decision about what our values are. Do we value rural living and being a rural community, or do we not? And if the answer is that we don't, I don't have a problem with that, I'll take my family and we'll move somewhere else. That's what drew us here, is we felt that Mapleton did value the rural community. And, and we're in the process of investing heavily in our property to do a remodel and turn it into the forever home that we want. We bought it because we liked the location and we liked that lifestyle. So I would just ask, looking at the traffic flow, looking at the traffic patterns, that we take that into account and we make intentional decisions. Where we're at, we have a lot of traffic problems because that hasn't been taken into account. We have people from Triple Crown that speed through stop signs, don't pay attention to speed limits, and it's going to get worse now that 600 new homes have been approved further up the road. So I would ask that we stop doing that and start making intentional decisions and do what we can to either preserve the rural feel and protect those pockets that we have remaining, or not, and allow those people to subdivide, develop, and leave. Thank you.
Thanks, Brandon.
My name is Patrick Hagan. Our intentions have been made clear in 2010 when two to one voters wanted less density and again a referendum two years ago. I think what residents want is abundantly clear, and I think there's a disconnect sometimes between planning and council with what the residents want, and so I'm just here to remind the commission respectfully that this is what we've wanted here. I don't think anybody has a problem with commercial. I think that's what we all signed up for, since the general plan has been for quite some time. But there's the right way and maybe not the right way to go through it, so thanks.
Last chance. Okay, then we will go ahead and close the comment and open to discussion with the planning commissioners.
Question for you, Sean. As I look at the existing zoning map, if we go back to this slide here, the left part of the residential shows as a TDR receiving site, the middle portion is not a TDR receiving site, so the developer cannot, one comment was made, why can't the developer take that whole eleven half acre residential zone and use it as a TDR receiving site for the 82 zone for half acres? And based off of the current zoning restrictions, that cannot be done?
So the current zone would allow for, in this section, two acre lots, in this section, one acre lots if you had TDRs, so that the TDR overlay was only applied on that section. So in order to do half acre lots, you would rezone it to R81, which is what the property funding is, and then with TDRs, you could go to half acre.
Quickly across the street to the north off of 1600 South, that zoning is high density, correct?
It's county. It hasn't been annexed to the city yet. It's county.
Yeah, so the general plan designates it as high density residential, but it is not yet annexed.
So as, as it becomes annexed, we could very likely have high density houses straight across the street?
That's what the general plan would indicate at this point would be. That's what the vision has been for it. Now whether that happens, you know, when an annexation is submitted, they submit an application, there's a discussion on development proposals, and so it's really up in the air what that would be, obviously. But based on the general plan, the expectation of somebody looking at it, based on our current general plan, would be yes, that some type of high density.
But that general plan is for, the high density is approved between 1600 South and 1600 North, not south of 1600 South. And this property is south of 1600 South. So that would be consistent with the general plan to have high density on the other side of the road, but not on the south side of the road.
Correct. And that's, that's the primary reason we were supportive of the third acre zone, because as you see how it's been treated, almost everywhere around us, the third acre is the transition between the low density and either the commercial without.
And Sean, I apologize if this, if we're outside of the, outside of our time to talk, but why is, why is what the general plan identified even relevant when that section is not part of the city? I mean, that would be like me deciding what I wanted for Warham.
And Jay Merrill is not a facility.
Yeah, I mean, so every city identifies what their annexation boundaries are. They say this, you know, when the city is fully built out, these will be our boundaries, and that is our annexation boundary. So this, well, certainly at some point will be part of Mapleton City. It may not be for a number of years. It may be tomorrow. We don't, we don't know. So the city plans for it, and in the current general plan, that's, this is what it indicates, right? This is, this is what's in office.
As a matter of, I guess, Sean, maybe you can help clarify some of the things that the city has done, both city staff, planning commission, and the city council to help address the concerns of the city through 2010 referendum and the Slant Road referendum. Last year, it was in December, planning commission and city council voted to remove the R3 zone, which was a higher density than the R2B zone, taking into account the Mapleton citizens' recommendations to, against high density in Mapleton City. There is a, correctly, if I'm wrong, federal mandate to provide bollington housing throughout the, throughout the United States, and cities are supposed to present plans for that. And as a step, Mapleton City, in advance knowing that, has opened up basement apartments to help, I guess, prevent high density in some of these areas and still meeting that federal mandate.
So the state has requirements that every city must adopt a housing plan that says, we've looked at the needs of our community and we're providing opportunities for people of a variety of income levels. And there's a number of things you can do, and accessory apartments is one.
I have a question on that. Wasn't that why Harvest, one of the reasons why Harvest Park was originally, was supposed to be lower income housing, you know, like more affordable housing? I don't want to say lower income housing, more affordable housing, and now it's just as expensive as anywhere else in Mapleton, so...
Yeah, I mean, providing affordable housing in Mapleton is very difficult. We have, because it is a wonderful place to live, property values are much higher than they are in other locations. But the state is requiring us to demonstrate how we are removing impediments to do that, and that's, that's a separate discussion. This, we're not arguing that what's being proposed now is meeting our affordable housing standards, and that's not why we would recommend approval. Maybe start with the commercial component.
Yeah.
See what the thoughts are of the commissioners.
Yeah, in general, how are each of you commissioners feel about the, about the commercial property specifically?
I'm supportive of the commercial. I think Ridley's at this corner would be, would be a great asset to Mapleton. I coach at Maple Mount High School, so I travel this road every day, in and out, in the mornings, in the afternoons, and evenings. It could be a great opportunity. No longer do I have to drive all the way to Springville to Ring's or Smith's. Having a grocery on this corner would be great. So I'm supportive of the commercial.
I am, yeah, supportive too. You know, we've had grocery stores looking at these corners, these four corners, two of the four corners for a while, and, I don't know if this isn't proprietary information, but I remember hearing a year or two, Barrow Smith's saying that they have a study, and within five years, they could, they could support another Smith's here. So honestly, I would rather have a smaller grocery store than another big Smith's. And I think, you know, looking, looking at some of the other stores, looking at one in Midway, it has a nice feel to it. It meets with our, our commercial design standards, and it would be a nice addition. So I'm supportive of the, of the commercial side.
Yeah, that's basically my feelings as well.
One other question I had about commercial. The resident directly to south is concerned about noise, and your truck delivery bay, conceptually, is on that side. What time typically do your deliveries occur?
You know, it fluctuates by store, but I can tell you that we have certain stores that have a limited time because of the, because of the neighbors, so that's always an option that we discuss.
So we're not going to get trucks moving in there 2:00 AM?
It still happens. I would, I would opt for that.
Of course you are.
You don't speak for our stores, right? And we, we have a couple that back up a single family residential, and we do have limited delivery times. But no, 2:00 AM is not a typical delivery time for a store that's not open at night, I would say. And if, if the rezonement gets approved and if they decide to, to move forward, everyone will be re-novated, a lot of site plan, design drawings, landscaping, everything to be able to work through some of those, those questions, those issues.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying. I think it's important to know that there's, there's steps that take place in the conceptual layout isn't what we're dealing with tonight. Yeah, my, my feelings are, I've talked to a lot of people over the years about grocery stores in general, and I, I feel generally in, in the entire city of Mapleton, I think that 73% is pretty accurate. I think of all the people that I've talked to, the vast majority of them are very supportive of grocery stores. This being the site that has been chosen for, for years, about decades, I'm going to believe that this is, I'd be very supportive of this. And I've been in many Ridley's, and I love Ridley's, it's very, very well kept, very clean, meets our design standards.
What hours do they operate?
You need our standard hours?
We deliver different by the community, but our longest is 6:00 until 7:00. Most are 7:00 and are 7:00 to 11:00.
What about Sundays?
Most grocery stores are open at Sundays.
Since the state has these roads, have they been approached or given you any feedback on the, on the future changes?
No, the, this being just the original concept design of the, of the property and, and the original just zone change application, that process doesn't happen until later down the road. Engineering and road conditions and traffic studies happens down.
So they could change a lot of this?
Oh, yeah. If, if the city engineer or Udoc comes in and says, no, there's, there's issues here, then absolutely they could. So I think overall, generally, we're more favorable to the commercial. And the proposed concept plan includes two bad sites up, up there that kind of still... Okay. Let's talk about the residential.
I think on residential, I'm kind of in line with staff recommendation of the R2B rezonement, to allow three acre lots.
So you're not supportive of R2B?
No. With the townhomes. And that's, that's the same feeling that, as, in my first study, R2B at now, it's just, you know, jumping into high density right next to larger lots, that's unacceptable. Now, to address a couple of comments, so, well, I don't know. So one, one comment was, it was Mrs. Newbold, right? Made the comment, what, what Ridley's doesn't, doesn't make it? And I honestly, I see the same thing with houses in Mapleton. I first came to Mapleton in 1905, and as a young single adult, we used to go down and have activities at, it was then the Ross House in South Bend Town, which is great, but then, you know, after a couple more families went through, and then nobody could afford it, nobody wanted a big house like that, they fill in the disrepair as a slum inside and out. We've had other big houses that have turned into Airbnbs, and then went into a, it was a, it was a road treatment facility, because they, essentially, they didn't make it as single family houses. And yet, we let people build big houses in Mapleton because they buy property and they have the rights to develop the property within, within the zone within. And so I don't know that, you know, we can, we can necessarily make that judgment to say, well, we don't think it's going to make it, therefore we can't approve it. No, we, we're operating on, on the property laws and the land use laws in this case, and so we need to deal with it on a, on a land use level. Another couple of comments were made by Mrs. Pugmeyer and Mrs. McQuiggins, who, interestingly enough, you're probably... who, interestingly enough, you're probably one of the two people in here that lives on property that wasn't rezoned. Maybe one, I don't know. But everyone else lives on property that was rezoned from originally rural residential, rural, rural, rural agricultural, that was then rezoned, within the confines of the general plan at the time, right? So we've all benefited from rezones. And a lot of times, I hear people say, "Oh, the city just keeps rezoning, and we need to stop it." Well, the city doesn't just go rezon. It's individual property owners who say, you know, "I want, I've done farming, I now want to sub-apply and sell off my property because it's too much for me to handle." And that's their right. And if it's within the general plan, then it's within their right, and we need to allow them to do that. So we don't necessarily, the city doesn't, in fact, the city cannot go to some property and just say, "Hey, I want to rezon this property," without the property owner's approval and without the neighbor's notification. So the question here tonight is twofold. Should we change the general plan? Because right now, it's two different designations within the general plan. The general plan, just on the other side of the street, is different and is more consistent with other areas in town, in transition between a one or two acre zoning to commercial. And one thing that I guess we would like to see, and I would like to see, is that typically, we like to step lot sizes down. In other words, we haven't usually allowed just going from two acre lot to a third acre lot. We usually like to have, you know, one acres and a half acres, and then go down to third acres. In this case, the property is zoned, one acre. And so, you know, I guess personally, it's zoned.
A2, just on A2.
We just reach in, oh, no, no, sorry. The neighboring property is one acre, right? And so I guess what I would like to see personally is, you know, maybe half acres on edges and then third acres in the middle. That's typically what we'd like to see in this family situation.
I'm not for the R2B rezon, the wrong zone in this area, especially with the one acres behind it to the south and the west. I am in favor of a step, as we've talked about, to go from an A1 zone to an RA2 zone. I think it's a good fit, it's a good designation for this area. If we were to keep this A2 zone in the general plan, as that property to the north does annex in Mapleton, and if it does go identity, you'll have identity, RA1, the purple, commercial, and this one little green square in the midst of the rest of the zoning, that doesn't really fit. So I am in favor of a step zone from a one acre to a third acre. So I would be in support of staff's recommendation to zon this RA2.
Yeah, I basically, I've got those sentiments. I think everybody knows that I'm pretty staunch on being very scrutinizing on zone changes. And this area is really tricky to me, because we've got an A2 zone right next to the commercial zone, and potentially some higher density in the north. But it's tricky, because there's, it's, to me, it's conceptually hard to make that buffer happen fast, so going from a half to a third, to, well, from a one to a half to a third is tricky in this area, because it's actually not that big of a lot to make that transition to the point where the commercial starts. So it's tricky. I definitely would not be supportive of the R2B zone change. However, in this case, I'm typically against all zone changes. However, in this case, I would actually be comfortable with the RA2 zone, medium density, with some maybe some restrictions on that not all of it be third acre, that there be some lots that are bigger than three acres, especially around the residential.
Well, that's definitely going to put on the developer.
Yeah, as part of a rezon, you have some discretion, so you could include some conditions to the concept line. You want to make sure that you're clear in your findings as to why you're making that condition, why it's a benefit to that helps the whole neighborhood city. Yes, you have that discretion?
I'd still be in favor of, you know, if we're going to go a step, and we go half acre, third acre, twin homes.
No, 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 no.
Twin homes in that area. This is a discussion, I don't know, commissioners at this point. Right. But, so, I'm in favor of the RA2 zone change for the whole thing, and just limit it all to third acres.
I agree. I don't think putting those kind of restrictions on the developer. You make it RA2, third acre, and the developer has that option to make a good community, basically, by putting, you know, those half acres are going to be bordered at one acre to the south, and then there's those, the tree line to the west, there'll be front lots as well.
So you're saying you're okay with just the rezon of RA2 with all third acre if the developer wants to?
This one thing I'm looking for is, is for the houses on the two acre lots. And one directly to the south of...
See if you can see it. I think when we were looking at what the setbacks would be between if you have thirty foot, or twenty-five foot rear setback for the, along here, and where these existing homes are, it was, you'd have between a hundred to almost three hundred feet between the properties? Between the homes.
Between the buildings, right.
Most of it, most of these homes are old, fairly close to the front with pretty big back doors. They vary a little bit.
The thing that I do agree with though is, is there's cows and chickens and pigs and things that have up against the back fence, so this is going to be something that the new landlords should completely understand. And I grew up on a ten acre smaller range, so I love cows and chickens, that smell, so that's just me. But if I was a city person moving to a third acre lot, I would definitely want to know that there was going to be some effects around my...
Well, for a comparable situation, well, not really comparable, but because, I think she said she has two cows?
Five. Five.
Okay, five. If you're familiar with the stockyard right over here on 800 North, they have...
We can't, we can't.
Oh, sorry, if you're familiar with the stockyard over here on 800 North, or 800 North, how many cows do they have?
A hundred? More than that.
More than a hundred, and they have third acre lots right next to them. In fact, the front of mine built in one of those third acre lots, and haven't heard any problems from that. So I don't think five cows is going to be an issue.
And hopefully, the people are moving their older race, and they understand that.
And also, just to tell the way, your fears is you have those animal rights, they're first, and, you know, that's your right, and...
Does the city owe backup?
They need to understand that when they move in. I'm sorry, what was your question?
And does the city owe backup?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's getting it off the record.
Absolutely, absolutely. The animal rights are in place. And that doesn't mean if you have a pile of manure that's against city code currently, that you could do that, right? There's still standards, but if you're following the standards of the earth, yes, absolutely. And if this subdivision has, right now, on the concept plan, I think there's at least one that's half acre. Anything a half acre older or over, this subdivision would also have animal rights, so... They may have some lots to do as well. But you can, we can include a note on the plat, if you want to make it clear that, have a condition that, as a notification, that the property to the south and to the west have animal rights, and to be aware of issues.
John, when we moved to Mapleton twenty-two years ago, locals had their dairy there, and we had to sign a form that we wouldn't complain about their dairy. So I guess there's nothing in place that way, and now it's homes, but at the time, it wasn't dairy.
Was that a form, was that a form you signed at the title company during closing?
I think so, yeah. I know we had to sign something that we wouldn't complain about supplies or the whatever, because they were there for...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you could include a note on the plat, we can record something on each individual title, because we're certain that's easy to get.
Also, sorry, I was here about when they asked to rezon, because, sorry, I cry all the time, and this is really not even... But they said that they didn't want it to affect them if it was going to cause any harm to them. They want their neighbor to be able to love home for its daughter, but as you're looking at the zone and you're thinking they're one acre lots, they're not. They're two. They didn't allow the zone, they didn't ask for it. So what you're saying, a lot of weeks ago from one to a third, that's okay? They're not, though. They're really, they really are. Two, two and a half, about a week, so four?
Two over two, everybody's fine.
I think we've had three that have applied to split, but she's correct.
They didn't want it, they didn't ask for it, they said, "As long as this doesn't affect us, as long as nothing bad, and we don't have to pay for anything." And to me, the city here, this is affecting them. And if it wouldn't have changed your vote, looking from going to the two acres, you wouldn't say, "Let's put a third, and we're okay with that." I think it would have changed your mind, so I'm hoping that you'll think about it, because they said, "We don't want it to affect us." And I feel like it is, for that one man and for his daughter to build the whole. They're not, now you're going to have third acre lots behind them. I would hope that they could at least have a half. I'm liking the idea of a restriction, that they have a half bordering them with the third in the middle. And I feel that that's a fair compromise. I would hope that we could be fair with the people that are going to be neighbors and have these issues. I don't know how many homes that would affect. I'm sure they, as developers, have it in their mind right now, how many homes? Now, how many pieces of land we're not going to, we put half acres right here with third in the middle, it's forty homes. But if it's all thirty, it's forty-seven. I mean, you guys know, I'm sure you're aware, if we're put saying, would it be worth five less homes for them to have a little extra space and feel like, "I'm happy, it's okay. This is the best situation for everyone involved."
Well, just, I just wanted to let you know, for me, and I can only speak for myself, that even knowing that that was rezoned recently to the one acre, I personally am looking at this, what is existing right now. I personally see the need for more of a transition, that's why I support. It's tricky, because like I said earlier, it's such a short distance between these properties.
Yes, it's hard, because that's like half, maybe more.
So it's really tricky to go from two acre, two and a half acre, to one acre to the half acre to third acre. If we decide to go down that path, so... I totally agree, and all of you understand that I see, that's the way I see it, so it's a tricky situation.
Developer already has a half acre lot on that back, how do you feel about that?
It's more about layout, and obviously, how am I trying to say this? As a developer, we think the third acre is, we feel like that would be an acceptable fifth. It's kind of tricky to do halves and thirds in there. So what were you thinking was acceptable?
But can we just let him talk, because he's not asking.
And so we feel, I mean, at this point, we feel like we would like, we're willing, working with staff under their recommendation to go to the third acres. It's kind of, like you said, it is a tough transition. It's hard to do a subdivision with halves and thirds. And I know that just as it lays out, I think we looked at it and we felt like we could follow the recommendation of staff, take that direction and go to thirds. It would be tricky to, I might, I'm like drawing it up, but some of them could end up being that, but it's kind of hard to say exactly what they can be. So I would prefer, at this point, to stick to the firsts.
I understand. I was, Ryan was actually my bishop, I think he's a great man. I love him, but it may be, he's saying they would prefer to stick with the third. We would prefer they not do it, so...
They're already there.
Have half an acre on the back and let him get his preferred third that he wants. We just want a row of homes. I just, I want the best for everyone involved. And I think half acre on the back where they order, I don't, I don't know, but I'm sure they can tell you it's going to eliminate two homes on that back row.
It will probably eliminate a lot of homes, but if everyone's happy with this, and they don't make quite as much money if they don't have quite as many homes, you're still going to be okay. Still not wrong, going to be all right. We'll do our part as accepting what they want to do, and I know they have to go back to drawing board, but half acre and third acre, you can be right, there's enough property, you can be right in the half acre.
Well, Ryan says it's tricky, but in Park Meadows, I have a smaller home, I live on half an acre, but I have neighbors who have an acre. We all live together, love one another, it works well.
I live on third acre, and we all love each other. That's awesome.
Yeah.
And the people in Harvest Park live on smaller lots, and they all love each other.
Yes.
Sean has a question. With that being zoned, RA1 to the south, if they look at the west, can a new property purchase one of those lots and use TDRs to make it small size?
No, they can subdivide it to one acres, it's mostly, because once you're platted, then you can't go back and use TDRs. And so there's, there's been, I think, the corner one, this one, and one other that's proposed to subdivide in that, since that zone changes.
Any other concerns still brought up that you guys want to address? I think traffic is going to be one that we really just don't have control over, and I think the fact that the commercial is already been zoned for that area lends itself to the traffic is going to be there no matter what. And that's kind of UDOT's problem. I really honestly feel that UDOT is going to take care of that. They're going to put in the necessary extra lanes, they're going to make it with, it's not going to be overburdenous into the traffic. I mean, the traffic already is crazy, taking that out is... Any other concerns? And just a reminder, this is a recommendation item for us. We're going to be doing a motion to, as a recommendation to the city council, and this will be going to the city council.
And that meeting will be Nancy for the city council?
No. No, we'll alert everyone when it's gonna.
Thank you. And just to be clear, no matter what you recommend, the city council can do whatever.
The city council has all the power to hear our recommendation or not.
Thank you.
I guess the conflict for me, just, you know, looking at this property is just that, you know, ideally, what I'd like to see is, is, you know, half acre down that edge and that edge, but it's not that big of a property. Yeah, because you start playing, there's this one, this one in the corner is a half acre, and so that, that's a good reference for what, what the size is. And then they get third acre lots and then go, and then one of this side. And then they, they have these, and then you've got the long skin blocks instead of, and then not have, and then of course these have to go. So that middle section, and, and.
Hey Darren, Darren, I have a, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Nanette.
Hey, just to clarify, when, when somebody comes in and buys, wants to buy a piece of ground like this, we, we can't guarantee that person that they can build fifty homes. There's no guarantee for the developer. When they buy a piece of ground, it is up to you guys, neighbors around them. So I almost feel like we're acting a little bit like they, because they want forty, fifty homes, we have to give it to them. You see what, you know what I'm saying?
I can see what you're saying, but.
And so.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's no guarantee for the developer. It's a gamble when they buy a piece of ground.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, everybody knows that, that's exactly how I feel.
You know.
If you land in this zone that way, that's.
Right. And it's.
The truth with this part is that there's already so much dynamic around it, that's, that's the only reason why I'm even contemplating that idea of allowing it, is just because of the dynamic of this area and how it's planned out and, and the commercial is a big factor.
And I understand that too, but also maybe developers can, can look at that and say, you know, listen to these people, the neighbors around us. That is, um, something that I, I don't know if it's being hurt, I know that developers come back to the front, but do we have to force that many homes in that little spot?
Well, we wouldn't be forcing it, we would be.
I, I know, I'm not saying either, and I, I take that back, I don't mean you guys are, but that's, but do allow it. Allow, allow is a better word, thank you. Just, I'm throwing that out there, right?
Totally agree, yeah.
Well, so just as a proposal for motion, um, and, and seeing that it's got to go to the city council, uh, maybe a safer option for me would, would be just to require a half acre block or lots. And then, and then that gives the, the city council a little time to look at it and the developer to look at it and work out what they want to do. But at least we're not, we're not dropping down to the, the least one. That might support. So, um, to the right, maybe this is going to be.
You can do, this is essentially what you're doing, but you're adding a component, so you could just add on the buffering.
Yeah, I'm thinking, Sean. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval to the city council to rezone the lots in question. And I guess I gotta read the additional request and that's.
And would you talk a little louder, please?
Okay, sure. I'd like to make a motion that in consideration of an amendment to the general plan from shopping center, commercial and rural residential to shopping center, commercial and median des, density residential, uh, and an amendment to the zoning from the general commercial one, neighborhood commercial one and agricultural residential A2 to general commercial one and, um, is that the right term?
RA2.
Residential RA2, um, for eighteen point five acres located approximately sixteen hundred south, sixteen hundred west, and review of, of the concept plan that includes a grocery store and residential, except that we're not really reviewing the residential development, so review of the concept plan that includes a grocery store, um, with, and residential development with single family lots. With the, with the noted, um, uh, special conditions and including one additional special condition that, um, that the adjacent lots on the west and south side of the residential parcel be required to have half acre lots. And, and with the addition of, of a note on the plat, uh, certifying animal rights for the existing residents.
Require, requiring notification to potential lawyers.
And requiring notification to potential lawyers.
Awesome. We got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, just a quick note too, uh, many of you probably have heard, but if, if you haven't, the city is in the process of, we've hired a consultant to come in and help us evaluate the general plan. There's going to be extensive opportunities for public input. There has been some rumors that the city's trying to get this done quickly. That is not correct. We'll take as much time as we need. It will be at least a six month process, probably more. So just stay tuned on that. We really will, we'll be reaching out to everyone. There'll be opportunities for online surveys, interactive opportunities that way, as well as public open houses and, and a number of opportunities to come and, and help us reevaluate the general plan and determine where we're going from here. So I hope that everybody will take that opportunity to participate.
I think it's city for the, of all, of all changes.
Yeah, and the, the council adopted a moratorium for a hundred and eight days. Uh, we do have a couple of zone, rezone applications that came in before that, which you'll be seeing in the next couple of weeks. Those involve the property, many of you will probably receive a notice on this one as well because it's the old Olson shoot part. Um, that property and they're, they're contemplating just, uh, some, potentially some small scale residential, but primarily industrial, as that's what the general plan currently indicates for that area. So if you have any questions on that, feel free to come in and see me, but you'll probably be receiving a notice in that, in the mail system too.
Thanks.
Can I make a comment? Things really changed when you, when the city, not you, approved Harvest Park fifteen, sixteen years ago. That, that, when we moved in here about that time and I said, people don't know what that's going to do to make that. And I want to thank you for listening to the people here tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we have another item, item number four, is a consideration of an ordinance amending the outdoor water dedication requirements for new subdivisions. What I'll do is if you guys want, we'll, we'll wait a moment if you want to go out to the foyer to, to chit chat, otherwise we're all embarrassed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair members of the commission. So right now, when new subdivisions, um, are, are platted and recorded, they're required to dedicate a certain number of water shares and water rights. Uh, the dedication is based on lot size, so it's a sliding scale. The smaller lots dedicate fewer and the larger lots dedicate more. Uh, there is no cap. And so the, the issue we've seen with that is, uh, we'll have occasionally proposals to, you know, property owners will have a five acre parcel or something of that nature that they just want to build one home on. The water requirement is so costly that it's really a deterrent to, to having people propose larger lots. And so what staff is recommending is that we amend the ordinance to put a cap at three point five acre feet. So you follow that sliding scale like you currently do now, but once you get to a requirement of three point five acre feet, you would not have to submit additional shares for that one lot. There's very few properties that this really impacts because this is really for lots larger than two acres. We don't get many proposals anymore for those, but this will at least allow people who do want to do that not to have a deterrent of a seventy-five thousand dollar bill for, for water rights to dedicate, right? So that's, that's the genesis for this proposal and, and it's a pretty simple, uh, pretty simple amendment to the code.
Thank you. Any questions for Sean?
This one, I'm sorry, this is all the comment, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Do we open it up to public comment, same rules as. Anxiously. Waiting to get to the line. Okay, we'll close the public comment.
I'll make a motion. We approve consideration of an ordinance amending the outdoor water dedication requirements for new subdivisions. I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number four passes. And that is the end of our meeting today. Thank you all for coming. We'll be adjourned.
I, I do have a question. So I was, I write my biography a lot down in this country, I mean, the, the area, and I was writing along and, and I thought I saw what, what I thought were marijuana plants.
They are, are.
And, and then I, the next time I wrote past, it's like, those are marijuana plants.
If it's a hemp.
And, yes, right. Yes, hemp. So the question I had is, and, and this is, and this is in a particular spot where there, it's right next to a, a neighborhood, there, there kind of a fence around part of it, but most of the property isn't fenced. And so I'm wondering, um, is there something we can do in Mapleton to say that's, that that's not a permitted use within city boundaries? Because it seems like to me like that ought to be something that ought to be off, you know, on county farm lands in place instead of an extra bunch of homes.
Yeah, we certainly could look into it. It's highly regulated by the state, right? They select only a, a few people that can, can do that.
But obviously, the guy in Spanish Fork was selected right next to us.
Right. Yeah, no, I can, I can look into the realities with our city attorney and see.
Their security, their security sleeps in a pub tent on the side of the farm. I wonder if that was a, that's a, that's a.
Not even that. You're pretty handsome. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.